We, I'm gonna talk about the meeting at first before we get started on the agenda. This is very definitely a planning session. There will be no votes taken. This is gaining a whole lot of information. And one of the things that's unique in our election this year is that we already know who our councilmember elects are. So although they are still officially regular citizens at this point, they are very definitely councilmember-elect and we wanted to invite them to the table to be a part of the conversation without having to do it three minutes at a time and signing up to speak for the topic. Because what we're doing is laying the groundwork for a budget that both Mr. Kirkland and Ms. Lee will very definitely be a part of voting on that budget when we approve that for an October 1st start. So some of you have been to workshops before, some of you have not, and I want to remind you of a couple of things. These microphones, the only way that I can technically say it is that you have to get obnoxiously close or people are gonna be writing at home, "We can't hear." And if you are not talking, please turn your microphone off. So you need to slide the button towards you, make sure that you get really close to the microphone. Secondly, unlike council where we all know the rules of procedures that you have to wait till you're acknowledged and be given the floor before you can speak, part of the point of having the planning session is to be able to have a little bit more give and take and ask the questions. So you don't have to wait for me to give you the floor. If you've got a question, please feel free to go ahead and ask the question. I will ask you, we're recording this, and just for everyone's participation, just the basics of, please don't have side conversations. It makes it hard on the person presenting and if you guys are talking, it's important stuff and everybody wants to hear it. And then, of course, it's always best if we talk one at a time because two at a time is just too hard to follow. So with that, we're ready to rock and roll. And our first item on the agenda is citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No.
All right, we don't have anyone for citizen comments, so we are done with that. There's two main topics and they're quite a bit different. We're gonna cover one and then we're gonna cover the other. Again, there won't be any voting. There is a ton of information that you're gonna be able to gain this today and you'll also be able to ask some questions. So the first thing that we're going to talk about as listed on the agenda is discuss the status of the long-term water supply in Simsboro Aquifer Water Treatment Facility to include future water needs and the related impacts. And if that feels like a really large topic, that's intentional. It allows us to talk about a lot of things having to do with water. Many of us know that our wastewater treatment plant's under construction. I know all of the councilmembers and our councilmember-elect have toured our wastewater treatment plant, so we're not talking about wastewater, we're not talking about 304, that location. This is a specific water conversation, the drinking water. There's a reason it's upstream of the other stuff that we're talking about. So with that, I will turn things over to our city manager, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you for all of that, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers and councilmembers-elect for being here. So as the mayor said, we're looking for feedback from you as we go here. As a brief reminder, we have several sessions laid out for you that should be on your calendars that will lead up to a May the 12th full-day planning session where we'll talk about the budget. Tonight, as the mayor said, we'll talk both about water planning and transportation planning. And then on April the 19th, this meeting will inform a discussion on April 19th about our fiscal forecast and our CIP. And on April 19th, you will also hear us talk about where we are on implementation of the city's comprehensive plan. For the water discussion, our presentation will be a bit substantial. ACM Trey Jobe will do an overview of where we are on this topic to date. For those of you who have been on the city council for a while, a lot of this will be a repeat for you. It'll be not a repeat at all for newer members of the city council and, of course, Ms. Lee and Mr. Kirkland. What will be new information for all of you will be where we are with anticipated costs for the new water treatment plant. The cost projections for the plant are increasing substantially. We'll talk about where we are with all of that. What you will hear from CFO Waldron here in a bit is what we're projecting the impact of all of that will be on water rates. That is the result of us utilizing the water rate model that we have. In a few weeks, probably sometimes in May, at a regular session, we'll dive more deeply into the water model. We'll have our consultant here to explain how that model works. And so this won't be our only opportunity to talk about all that. This afternoon, the discussion will be pretty high-level, again focused on what our approaches should be from this point forward and we'll talk about what our alternatives in that regard might be. And so, again, Ms. Waldron, when we get to her part in the presentation, we'll overview what we're thinking right now from a very conservative standpoint, the impact on the rates will be from the construction of this plant. You will notice that we have for you a copy of tonight's presentation material. For the May 12th session, you will receive a notebook, a good old-fashioned three-ring binder that'll have a lot of information in it. That notebook will include tonight's PowerPoint presentation. You do have this in front of you tonight in case you want to use that to follow along and take notes. So with that, I'm gonna ask ACM Jobe to dive into the presentation unless, Council, you have any questions for me. All right, Trey?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council, councilmembers-elect. Like Paul talked about just a second ago, we're gonna do a quick recap and then talk about some of the big changes. My clicker will turn on here. So as part of the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, there was really a long-term goal there, COLD 2.2, and that was to ensure that we found a long-term water supply for the city of Bastrop. What we were trying to accomplish there was, again, that long-term water supply. We wanted to make sure that we had a really robust and reliable system, that it was drought-resistant. That is important because our current wells are alluvial. In 2011, we actually had some drought, in 2011, that impacted, I believe, three wells from overpumping, which they overheated, putting the city in quite a bind. That was an eye-opener for everybody at that time. Again, we want to comply with all the regulations and just meet the city's development goals. We talked about this in 2018. If you'll remember, we had a workshop, I believe it was March of 2018, we talked about water, we talked about wastewater, we talked about all of the system facts and how complicated things were, how old the plant was, we bought it for a dollar when it was wastewater. But something to point out in the 2018 system facts is, if you'll recall, we have 10 canister filters because our wells that are alluvial are actually groundwater under the influence. So that means they need to be treated like surface water. So when we move to a different well field, we actually won't have that required anymore, any longer. Here in red, you can see there are a few changes that have happened since 2018. There's a few more miles of main, water main, about 9.3%. What I thought was interesting was we actually increased meters, 22%, almost 1,000 meters, probably difference, I would say, in the last two years, really. 800 fire hydrants from 500, that's crazy. A whole lot more water valves that we have to maintain and exercise on a monthly basis. But again, to point out, what's great about this is when we move to this new system, we will actually take those canister filters offline, the turbidity monitors can go away. This is gonna be a little less complicated and a little less expensive to operate.
Trey, don't you guys also have issues with pH going up and down?
We do. We cannot control the water quality of the Colorado River. So as runoff continues to happen, there are more nutrients inside of the river. It changes the pH of the river. And we have no control on how to make that adjustment, so the new plant will allow that to happen.
So that's the scientific way? Here's the layman's term. In the summer, what's flowing in the Colorado River is mostly effluent from the city of Austin. And so that, and it's clean water, it's gone through their system, but that is real different than rainwater that's coming off of Mr. Plunkett's property into the Colorado, you know, those naturals. So that's something, and when, since we have those gooey wells, that impacts it and it makes you guys have to mix and do a lot of fancy dancing to keep things working. And I'm just bringing that up because I really want to give a shout-out to the Public Works. It is not a traditional, easy thing for them to supply good drinking water to all of our residents.
Thank you.
Trey?
Yes, sir.
Where were the main increases in hydrants in the new subdivisions, in the water meters? Is that where they were?
Yeah, so something I think will be beneficial is because we no longer allow cul-de-sacs, for example, we won't have as many dead-end lines, which means we won't have as many valves, which is more efficient overall. But yeah, that was the main increase. These subdivisions brought in quite a few more fire hydrants and quite a few more valves.
Hey, Trey, just had a question. You said we were gonna get rid of those filter canisters?
Yes, ma'am.
About how much do those cost us a year, so we're thinking about?
Change in the filters annually is-
Or just the cost of those filters? I know they're not cheap.
Right, the cost of the filters annually are about $200,000.
So that's what savings we'll have by not having those?
Correct. And if you'll recall, in 2019, there was a flood event in the Colorado and it really stirred up and was dirty.
We had to buy more of them.
We went through a year's supply in three months because the water was so dirty. So we have no control over the water quality. We ended up spending $400,000, for example, that year on filters.
Right, I was just making sure we brought that point up. Those are the big savings.
Great questions. So Bastrop's growth projections are based on 4% at 200 gallons per day per capita, and it assumes that there's no growth in the city limits, and it also assumes that we're using our current water CCN. And the source of this, if you'll recall, after our workshop in 2018, we hired Friesen Nichols to do a preliminary engineering report. They provided that preliminary engineering report in 2019, and in 2020, that's when we decided to do a C-MAR, build a new plant, and they also are doing a water master plan for us. And these are the growth projections and what, they're all the assumptions that bring these numbers together and actually gives us the need for that first phase that we're talking about, which is 3 million gallons a day with a maximum of 6 million gallons a day for a water treatment plant. This is just a reminder of the city's water CCN. This is what they expect us to do in that population number that we talked about eventually, only here within the city limits, or actually, this is a touch larger than the city limits. And just to give you a comparison, I went ahead and put a picture in of the water versus the wastewater. It's always a good reminder that we're gonna continue to grow. We have a deal with Aqua as well, we'll talk about that a little bit later, but you can see the massive size difference. But they still expect us to have a need for that 10 million gallon a day built out at some point in about 50 years. This, again, it's a long-term water supply. Bastrop's existing conditions, I think it's important to point out, we're near peak capacity. We plan to have this built by 2021. There's been delays in the market, there's been, right, there's been tons of delays. We, we'll talk about that a little bit more when it comes to permitting later. Again, we're groundwater under the influence, our water quality can be degraded, we just talked about that. And all our wells are in the floodplain. A lot of people don't understand that, but if we get to the river and it rises above 23 feet and a well goes out, we can't get to it. There's no way to get to it, it's underwater, we have to wait for the river to go down. Again, it's not a good, reliable system. And most of our facilities are probably pushing 40 to 50 years old, so the pump stations, the Old Willow plant, a lot of the tanks are actually pretty, pretty old. And the wells themselves, when we ran testing, well pump testing, they actually are only about 50% efficient. So they run all the time and they produce a small amount of water, just enough to keep up. Again, the reason for us making the move. All those were great decisions, and now we're talking about the project components. So we're actually for the new well and water treatment plant, and this is where the cost change happened. So we're gonna add three new production wells for Phase 1, and again, that Phase 1 was 3 to 6 million gallons a day. We will add an alternate well later on and filters if needed so that we can go to 6 million for a max, I'm sorry, 10 million for a max. The work includes a transmission, the transmission pump station and pipeline that you see there on the screen. That's bringing things from Excess Ranch all the way down to the Willow Pump Station where we have about a million gallons of storage. And then we'll distribute it out through the system like we currently do. The work to date, the plans for the plant are 90% complete, the wells are actually 100% complete in design, and the transmission main is still undergoing some property acquisition and 60% design. What we're gonna go to, what we'll actually achieve when we get there is we've previously purchased 6,000 acre feet of water. When we started this conversation prior to 2018, we owned 2,000 acre feet of water. So a big part of that workshop was to make the decision to buy the remaining 4,000 acre feet. We made that purchase, we've now said, "All right, we're gonna build a plant, let's move forward." But in the meantime, we had already drilled Well J and we never put it into production. There's high iron and manganese out in that area, specifically farther north that you travel, plants can have the capability to make sure we can control the eastern odor iron and manganese, which is also something we never had an ability to do. Just because I think it's important, we also own 1,613 acre feet at Bob Bryant that we're currently permitted for, to the Lost Pines Groundwater Conservation District. And we have another resource for water, which is 1,400 acre feet from a well purchased along State Highway 21. We submitted our applications to the Lost Pines Groundwater Conservation District. Maybe I should've spelled that out, but that's what LPGCD means back in July. About 90 days later, they asked us for more information. We provided more information, we heard back from them in February of this year, of '22. We then were administratively complete, we had a hearing last night, and they've tabled our permits. They'd actually like to talk a little more about, they're gonna have some requests for us, and we'll hopefully have them by the 20th of April.
Mr. Jobe, did we have anybody that was contesting our permit?
No one contested the permit, no, ma'am.
And so we thought we were administratively complete, no one contested, we submitted everything in July, we already owned the acre feet, and we were tabled last night.
That's correct, and we've asked them to explain why.
I have a question.
Yes?
On the Well J, what's the timeline or process for that removal? Like, how long does it take? Is it, do we have what we need to effectively remove the iron and manganese? Or what's that?
We will. So as, the timeline for the construction of the plant is, I think, the end date is April of '24. And then we will have Well J along with three other wells that will provide water to that plant where it'll be treated, filtered, chlorinated, and then sent out into the distribution system. And yes, we expect absolutely to clean up and stop those dirty water complaints. So iron and manganese will sometimes give that dark brown tint that you see in the water when it's stirred up, and this should remedy that.
I have a question also.
Yes, sir.
On the 1613 acre feet of Bob Bryant Park and the 1,400 at the, I guess, from Highway 21, particularly the ones at Bob Bryant Park, is that, is that one of the parks that we had, one of the places we had a problem because it was in a park? Or is that not on a park, is it not included in a grant?
So I think I know what you're asking, and yes, that-
I hope.
The water system that was put in in Bob Bryant Park was not done with the permission of Texas Parks and Wildlife.
Right.
However, we're gonna remedy that with swapping some land, and then this well will remain, but it will fix the Texas Parks and Wildlife Division issue.
So it's inoperable until we fix that part of it?
The well itself is operating today.
Oh, it's operating?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's part of, a major part of our water supply.
Yes, sir.
That's one of the gooey wells.
But, but we, the point here is that we own, this is just an asset. We own 6,000 acre feet of water at Excess Ranch, 1,600 at Bob Bryant we're currently permitted for, and another 1,400. But yes, we, I do understand that the two are impacting each other, but yes, we should be in good shape.
Got a question.
Hmm?
Can you explain the unit? So acre feet, I assume, is one acre of water, one foot deep. And then, is there a time, like it's per month, per day, per year, per?
It is, it is per year. So what it is, is we're limited at so many acre feet per year and so many gallons per minute per permit, and it works out to be a, millions of gallons.
And I'm also guessing that it doesn't matter how much rain or how much input there is, it's just, that's how much we can take.
That's just how much we're permitted for, yes, sir. And we bought the rights to the 6,000. We've asked for permitting for, I think, $5,999, but yes, we own the 6,000 acre feet. And that's roughly, and you may help me out here, Mayor, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but one acre foot's about 250,000 gallons of water.
And Trey, the alluvial wells that are over near the Willow Street, is that, are those gonna remain in production after Excess Ranch comes online, or are we gonna?
No, sir, we will, we will turn those off. We had a conversation with the, with the Groundwater District last night. I think they're interested in actually monitoring the alluvial, the alluvial system there, which is something we can certainly consider.
Yeah, so-
We still have storage, but no well.
Do you storage at Willow?
Yeah.
So just kind of a step back to make sure that we're all on the same page. Currently, the wells that we have are not next to each other, they're kind of all over, and they're in the floodplain and they're gooey. So that means that you have turbidity and pH and things that you can't control. We're gonna swap those out, and Simsboro Aquifer, there are people all over the nation that would like to have their wells in the Simsboro Aquifer. It is a wonderful aquifer, it's deep, it's gonna be long-lasting. Unfortunately, that's, Ms. Lee, that's where the manganese and the iron kicks in. So you kind of swap out the, it's a high quality of water, but there are things that have to be removed. So that'll take care of, be taken care of in the plant, but the advantage is with having dug Well J, they know what water they're gonna have to be treating. The wells will all be coming out of the same aquifer, so they won't have this constant chasing, "What is it gonna be tomorrow?" It can be impacted by rain, it can be impacted by really a lot of things. It's like groundwater, hence the gooey. But, so the, the system and the piping will still be used, but all of the current wells will cease to be a water source.
Correct.
So does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
Can you tell us specifically where the, all the wells are located? I know you said Highway 21, Excess Ranch, Bob Bryant, and Fisherman's Park, right?
Sure.
It's, it's, if they're, which 21, is it east or west?
So there is, so we, there's no well on State Highway 21, it is east of here. It is probably at the entrance of, I'd say the back way to get into LBA, all right? And I don't have that street memorized right off the top of my head, but we own acre feet of water there. So we purchased groundwater rights to those four lots.
But there's no-
But there's no well.
Okay.
There are, there are five alluvial wells at Fisherman's, and there are, one, there is one alluvial well at Bob Bryant and one Simsboro well at Bob Bryant. So a total of seven.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And so in our groundwater and hydrology study, what we found out, you know, we utilized the state's best information, but we ran that model at 7,600 acre feet. While we owned 6,000 acre feet, we thought it was important to plan for the future, go ahead and see what the drawdown looked like, because did I mention we owned and are permitted for 1,613 acre feet already in the Simsboro? So if there was an ability to aggregate it right there at that well site, we wanted to see what that would look like. So we pumped it for 7,600 acre feet and came out with some recommendations that said, "Hey, you need three new, three new wells." It actually came out that we needed four new wells, but we'll talk about some value engineering that we did here in just a minute. We came back, and that's for Phase 1, that gets us to our, our 6 million gallon a day plant. One well, we're gonna go ahead and do an alternate bid item, see how they come back. And it said we'll be pumping roughly at 930 gallons a minute, and that's important because you want to limit your drawdown. So we went ahead and made sure that we cited the wells. If you look at that picture there, and you can see, that's Well J, that's currently drilled. We will drill these next three wells. And then, if possible, that's your alternate, your alternate well. And it's simply there for redundancy. But the bottom line is, those are gonna pump, they're close enough together and spaced close enough together that they actually only impact each other and not the neighbors. And we did that in an effort to make sure that we were a good neighbor, that we would conform to the Lost Pines Groundwater Conservation District rules, and again, we wanted to limit the drawdown. You may not know this, we have some history. In 2015 was the first time we applied for a permit for Well J. We ended up in a contested case during for about two and a half years, and there was a settlement agreement that said, "Hey, you guys need to make sure that the neighbors aren't impacted and you put a mitigation fund away." So we've done that, the mitigation fund is there, we should be able to move forward. And again, we had nobody contest the permit this time because we made sure we talked to everyone, everybody that was in the Simsboro. So again, that's the reason for the well spacing. This is the updated project schedule, and as you can see, we're in the well permitting phase still. We hope that ends on April 20th, and then we will, within 30 days, I think, let the bids to drill the wells. We may actually go ahead and let the bid to start the construction of the water treatment plant as well, because they're at 90% design, and that's enough, that's far enough along to go ahead and get a bid off of. And then we'll move forward with, again, the pipeline, the SCADA integration, things of all that nature, and that should be finished by April of '24. And now the fun part, we'll talk about some of the fiscal impacts. If you recall, when we originally saw our first PER from, well, let's talk about this first. So as part of our, as part of our preliminary engineering report from Friesen and Nichols, there was a suggestion that we would build a plant, and that plant would be about $38 million. There was also a suggestion that we do a water master plan so that we understand all the components of our distribution system, and we wanted to see what capital needs we had in order to continue with our growth. So we were actually very close to having the draft report of that water master plan, and as you can see, there's additional elevated storage that's gonna be needed. We're not sure if it's exactly gonna be to the west or if it needs, if we wanna move a few things around, that's still in discussion, but we know we need the elevated storage. We know that we need to add an additional transmission main to Bob Bryant. This is for redundancy, we thought it was a good idea. Let me go back to that well picture. You can see this line again that follows and hits Willow. We've made the suggestion that we go ahead and go this way and tie right into Bob Bryant Park, so that if something does happen along the route to Willow, somebody's excavating at that main transmission line, we can turn that off, still feed the city through Bob Bryant, and have a little more system redundancy. That is the goal. So that was a suggestion that the staff had. We thought it was important to put it in the capital improvements now. We have some replacement for a water line along Pine Street and the Agnes Street Extension. So the Agnes Street Extension itself, you know we have the grant, but it doesn't pay for the water wastewater improvements. So we went ahead and put the $800,000 in there for the water so that could get taken care of. And all of those costs equal about $21 million. So that $21 million is for some capital improvements that we should see over the next five to 10 years, based on our growth and how quickly we grow. I think we still have an opportunity, I've got a little note for value engineering down there, because while we think we will spend all this in three years, there's probably not quite gonna be three years, as we know everything's a little delayed, things are moving a little slower, and we're gonna have better information as we continue to design. So prices can still come down, right? But we're gonna make sure that we have the opportunity that every time something gets closest, is being designed, we can value engineer that all the way through. So I just wanted to tell you, $21 million sounds like a big number, we're gonna look at it every time they bring something to us and see where we can find value. Same thing for the plant. The new plant costs, the well field itself, the water treatment plant, the transmission main, that is now totaling 53 million is their estimate. Now that is with a 10% contingency. So that's a swing of 5 to 5.3 million dollars, which I think is significant. It originally came from 38, and then we actually have done value engineering and shaved off about 4 million. So the, the, the plant itself was 38. As the C-MAR came on board and they got to about 30% design, that number moved to, I believe, about 43. We then shaved 4 million off and got it really close back to the 38 number, and then another six months happened and the prices of the market changed and we're at 53 million. So-
But Trey, that's, that's up, even the 38 is up, correct? Because in the budget originally, and I mean, and I'm not, we all need to recognize, I don't think anybody's surprised, that material prices are going up, supply changes. There was a time when we thought it was gonna be like 23 million. There, there was a time when we thought it was gonna be like 23 million.
I think that was our.
It's in the budget at $22,870,000.
And I believe that was our original estimate from prior to higher in Freezing Nichols.
Right.
Right? They then came back with 38, and now we're at, now we're at 53 that the C-MAR.
I'm mainly talking about it because we talked about the March 2018 meeting, and that was when we knew, and Tracy will correct me, we hadn't raised rates in a very long time. We knew then, again, back on it from a rate standpoint and on wastewater, we knew we were gonna have to do a bunch, and we council decided at that time that nobody wanted to see their bill go more than double in, in one fell swoop, way more than doubled. So we were doing $5 every year, building up, knowing as the plant got there what the rates were gonna have to be, but those March 2018, we were talking about, we were not talking about a $53 million water treatment plant.
We were not.
By any stretch of the imagination.
That's correct.
Well, and the only rate increases we've done up to this point have been on the wastewater side.
Right. But, but we knew then, I guess what I'm saying is, we knew in 2018, with building a new water treatment plant, it was likely that water rates were gonna have to go up, but that was based on less than half of the number that we're talking about now.
That's correct. So if I remember correctly, we actually had Chris run a rough model based off of that 23 million, and there was no impact. And we weren't sure if it was gonna be 23 million, but it may change, we knew we may have to increase slightly, but there was no impact at all at 23 million.
So for everyone's benefit, Chris is, Chris England with.
Chris Eckruth, sorry.
I'm sorry.
He's our rate consultant.
Our rate consultant with New Gen Strategies, and, and he'll be at a regular council meeting in May to go over the rate model.
So speaking of those increment, increases, when were they gonna start? When were we actually thinking about it? Not the wastewater side, I know that one started, but we actually had a plan.
It was gonna be.
Well, we.
That's what she's saying, was that back then, we thought it was gonna be about even, right?
Yeah, all we've done so far is, in 19, we raised, we did a, a very aggressive first year, $10 on the base. This is all wastewater. And then in 20, fiscal '20, we did another five, and in fiscal '22, we did another five.
In the wastewater?
It's all been on the wastewater side.
I knew he had, I knew Chris had given us something for the water, I just didn't know if we actually had a plan to increment or not.
Well, and, and what they're saying is, the water recommendation was, he really thought that the rates were gonna be okay.
Okay.
Because the, of the, because it was the savings of the filters and some of the stuff that we've talked about with the plant at '22.
It was gonna be, oh, it's gonna be a wash.
It was gonna kind of wash out.
What he gave us on the water was the equivalent, so it was the larger meters getting in line with the AWWA equivalent. That's what he gave us.
I remember that conversation.
So we did, we have been implementing that, it was a five-year implementation, it wasn't on the three-quarter meter size, it was on the larger.
That's right.
So that was, that's still going on, yes.
We reduced the number of categories, and we got to consistency on the, on the meter sizes.
And, and some of that had to do with industry standard.
Yep.
And, and a, a rate that would promote conservation.
And I don't mean to stop you in your presentation, but you've talked several times about the delays. Can you kind of give maybe some, what were some of the delays that you, that we've got so we're like two years behind?
Sure, well.
Just to kind of catch all of us up on what we didn't get.
So, so six months I can attribute to, six to eight months I can probably attribute to the, to the groundwater district. We actually, our original schedule thought we would be completed in October of '23, and then, well, we didn't make that, so now we're at April of '24. But, but just in general, I think the whole waiting for the, for the PER to be done, if you recall, we had some decisions, we went back and forth on actually doing a C-MAR, and we held off some of those decisions until we brought a city manager on, and I think that also served as a little bit of a delay. But that, sir, well, not Paul's fault, but, but, but there was a decision to, to make sure we understood the PER, right, and, from the, from Freezing Nichols, and it just, I think it just took longer to bring people on board.
Do you have a, a rough breakout of how we got from 23 in 2018, 23 million to 38 to the 53? Just high level?
So there, so we, so we do.
I know a lot of it was materials and cost increase for that, but is there, do you have a comparison, so we can do?
So what I have is a, is a 30% estimate, and then I have a 60% estimate, and they're wrapping up the 90% estimate as we speak, and that's slowly getting better as we go, right? But the thing about the C-MAR contract is, once we have better information, then, then the numbers move, and they'll come back and give us a guaranteed maximum price. What they've said to us in our last meeting was it would be the 53 million, I'm hoping that come back and, and that changes a little bit, but.
And then that was including the 10% contingency too, which is kind, kind of a high, it's good to have a high contingency where you're at right now, but I'm assuming that's gonna come down as you get further along in the design process piece of it, right?
Yeah, and the big jump was, so the engineers' estimates were based off what Freezing Nichols came up with, as we hired the C-MAR, and they talked to more subcontractors, that's where the numbers have been increasing.
So it really hadn't gone out competitively at all, we're just doing budget from designers, right? And I would like for Trey to expand on that a little bit more, I think that would be helpful. He, he's made a couple of references to the C-MAR, the construction manager at risk construction method we are following, which does have some advantages built into it, and one of those, and Trey, you can fill in the blanks here, there are, there's several different bid packages still to be sent out over the next several months, I think like 10 different bid packages for subcontractor and sub supplier work, and so while we're dealing with a very conservative and big cost estimate right now, every one of those bid packages represents another opportunity to make sure we're at market, with the hope that the market conditions change in our favor, and represent another opportunity for future value engineering.
That's right.
After we award the, the maximum price contract, we'll, we'll have about 10 opportunities with 10 different bid packages to whittle this down. That, that's good, I would assume we'd get savings just through that, through that process. We would hope.
But, but what you're seeing today is like the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, and I'm glad we're doing that, because not, won't look so bad if, once we come down.
It's just a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, okay, and maybe we're asking too much too early, and you've got some more stuff in your presentation, but that's, that's.
Well, I think we're, we're really, we're really close, but you're right. So Tracy has some assumptions here that our rates are based off of, and that's a 4% annual growth rate, you know, the, again, the 2.85 growth rate in commercial, 75% impacting growth and impact fees. But what I think's important is that it doesn't decrease the operating cost, so we talked about when those filters go away, right? When there's, plus pumps pulling electricity, it does not assume that, it assumes that everything is still operating as is today. Again, it's very conservative, and, and that could have inflated the, the cost, the operating. This is the current, you wanna talk? Yeah?
I, I wanted to make sure we talked through some of those other assumptions, especially the, the one of, the, the new debt that's being projected here of a total of 68 million. That, that is a net number that Tracy developed, in fact, you probably ought to describe this, not me.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And, and just how many debt issuances that is assuming?
Right.
Because that's, that could change as well in a way, and if it did change, it would change in a direction that would lessen the immediate cost impact.
Right, so the rate model allows us, it's a, it's a complicated rate model, but it allows us to put a lot of different pieces of information in it, and it generates basically what the impact on those rates would be. And so, right, he's talked about some of the assumptions that we've put in this model. I wanna point out that the impact fees are yet again another assumption, so I'm projecting, I'm assuming, I'm using information that I have today as to how quickly those impact fees will come in. Those help mitigate the rate increases, because I'm able to use those impact fees to offset some of the debt costs. And so, the new debt issuances, there were several in the model, because it, when we put the projects in, then the model generates how much new debt we're going to have to have, and when we're gonna have to have it. So this is assuming about a $34 million issuance in 2023, that debt will actually go on in fiscal 2024, and then an issuance in '24, and the debt will go on in '25. And so, depending on how those projects work out, if there's, if we slow the projects down, if we determine that, let's say the Willow tanks can wait a couple of years, that all controls, when we sell the debt, probably won't control too much of the rates that I'm recommending, because we're looking at long-term debt, we're looking at 30 years of debt. And so, like they said, we've already included grants that we know about, the American Rescue Plan funds, we know we have that, fund balance, impact fees. What this does is, everything that's not assumed to be covered under something else is considered new debt. And like they said, I haven't really, I think there will be some increases in operating costs, I think there will be some savings in operating costs. That net is, is the unknown at this point, and then.
So the last two items, you don't think we should be carrying any money in those for the increase in operating costs, other than inflationary and a decrease in operating costs, so that we're not recognizing any decrease based on the new plant? You think we ought to?
Because there will be some increases too, I mean, we might be looking at additional staff over the next couple of years.
There will be a period where we're operating two, bless you, there will be a period of time where we're operating two plants.
Got some overlap. So one of the things I will say about the rate model is it's, it's an, it is a moving model, and I look at it, I mean, I will definitely be looking at it intensively about every six months, to update assumptions, to update projections, to see where we are based on the assumptions that we stepped out six months before. So we'll constantly be looking at the model.
Tracy? One other thing, again, on that $68 million number, and just to make sure we're all on the same page, we're, we're talking about the new water treatment plant, and we're also talking about the, the other system improvements that Trey went over in the previous slide totaling about 21 million, and that's where we would renovate existing storage facilities like the ones at, at Willow, and not at all advocating that we slow down here, especially with regard to the new water treatment plant, but while the water treatment plant is on a three-year schedule, it, it, it does appear that the, the other improvement, some of the other improvements could happen in years four and five, which could delay the debt issuance a little bit over the five years, which would have some beneficial impact on the rates.
Yes. So you said 30 years of debt, does that cover 30 years of growth in the city? It's kind of more of a question.
It, so it's actually probably 50 years worth of growth in the city. The, the capital improvements are all based off the actual growth, so we are, we're assuming that that's 2024, which is about, I'm sorry, 2044, which is about 22 to 23 years, at that 4% growth rate, but, but yes, the plant itself is a 50-year life.
Okay. And then, this debt, is it special in some way because it's backed by water, or does it require a bond election? I mean, like what, tell me, because I mean, it seems like this is a 50% increase in the debt of the city.
So these are, these are future decisions that council would ultimately make, and council has a few options in that regard. The city could issue revenue-backed debt that is backed by, it just as it says, that backed by the, the rates, that, that income. The city could also ish, issue general obligation debt that is backed by the full faith and credit of the city, and still target the, the debt to be paid off using system revenues, water and wastewater system revenues. Based on conversations we've had recently with our financial advisor, and just from my experience with this too, I think we would recommend the, the approach where we use general obligation debt, but backed by the revenues. Bond rating agencies have a tendency to prefer that, we get a better deal on, on bond insurance if it's backed by the full faith and credit of, of the city. That's, that's ultimately up to the city council, and, and, and then less than until state law changes on this next subject, whether or not you have, you, you ask for a referendum, you go to the voters to approve that, that's a, that's a council decision as well, you have that option still if it's general obligation debt. But as the mayor and as Adam probably knows, that's a subject of some discussion at every legislative session, and it, and at some point in the future, cities won't be able to issue certificates without voter approval anymore, I think is what most observers anticipate. So at some point in the future, we'll have no choice but to ask the voters to approve it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay. All good stuff. You can talk about this, Tracy, would you like to? Perfect.
He's always trying to steal my number slide. So, so this table is just reflective of what the model is projecting, so not until fiscal 2024 do we see an increase. It starts at the top with the residential three-quarter meter, $5 in 2024, $5 again in 2025. We apply, we apply the AWWA equivalent math to adjust all of the rest of the meter sizes. So I know that when you get down to like the six-inch meter, it looks pretty significant, but you have to understand, here, our six-inch meters are apartments, so that increase will go against that apartment, but it will then be distributed to 200 pe, you know, 200 apartments. So just keep that in mind when you're kind of looking at the, looking at the distribution. So this is as far out as we have, this could change depending on growth, it could, it could change depending on impact fees. So I always want to caution that this is what the model is showing now, but this could change, it could get better, but it could also get worse, so I don't want to step out and say, we're just gonna see a $10 increase, that's what we're looking at right now. Yes, so these are just the base rate, so we only use the base rate to pay for debt service, so the volumetric rates, we're not changing. The water they use, that rate is considered, that's not gonna change in our rate model, this is just the flat base rate that's on, on your bill. So your base rate would go from 27 to 32 to 37, and then the equivalent depending on the meter size.
What I think is important, if I can even channel my inner Chris Eckruth, he will absolutely talk about that three-quarter inch meter is your average single-family home, and that's who sees the impact of $10 over the next three years. Some of the current plan that we've just talked about, pros and cons versus the alternate plans we reviewed, we went back and we saw these numbers, you know, thought was important to just kind of do a gut check, if you will, of, of the cost, right? Because $53 million, we weren't expecting that, let's just make sure it still makes sense. So some of the, some of the pros to actually owning our own facility is your control water supply, you control the distribution system, the design is near completion. When I say that, we're at 90% and to change directions would slow us substantially as far as getting new water. We have the ability to manage the debt, right? So Tracy can get together with our financial advisor and our vast experience from our city manager, and, and they've been doing this a while, and they'll make sure that we can manage the debt appropriately, so it's something that the rate payers can handle. Again, we get to manage the rate structure, and we're gonna get a plant ultimately that's 6 million gallons a day that can expand to 10 million gallons a day and lasts us 50-plus years. The cons is if we slow down, the cost impacts could increase, right? The alternate water source, we went ahead and looked, we would still own our own water rights, and we would have the ability to leverage, we talked about owning that 9,000 acre feet of water, so there would be an opportunity to say, hey, we own this 9,000 acre feet, if we were to buy water wholesale from Aqua, for example, maybe there's an opportunity to leverage if it's worth something to them. I will say that while we own the water, if it's not permanent, it doesn't matter. So I don't know how beneficial it would be to them. So I don't know how beneficial it would be to them. So that's just something to think through. The per meaning would no longer be the responsibility of the city if we went to an alternate water supplier. But some of the cons are we have no control over the water quality. We still need to buy 6 million to 10 million gallons of capacity for our TCEQ rules. At the current rate that we have with Aqua in our wholesale agreement, that's an addition of a little over $4 million in expense. So to give you a understanding of what that looks like, the overall entire annual expense for the water department is about 3.4 million. So you would be doubling, a little over doubling that expense annually if we went to that, which to me made it not an option any longer. And then the distribution system cost at 21 million doesn't change. We still need pumps, we still need pipe, we still need tanks. And again, if we were to make that, we would, we would slow the current progress. With that, we can. We didn't.
Yes, sir. About $3 million to date has been spent on.
And you're 90%? Is that what I saw?
Okay, so we're going to take a little pause because we're at the end of water. Does, I, I think the last, does last slide make sense to everybody? It was the, oh my gosh, these expenses are really high. What, what are the other options? One of the things that has just is factual history in the, in the city of Bastrop is that they used to own the water well. In fact, they had a water well that had some of the best water in the county. And the council said, who in the world ever wants to be in the water business? And they sold the well. And that was, that's really how Aqua got started was we sold, sold them the well and they started in the water business. So we really can't do anything to change the CCNs. But we do, the majority, you saw there's a slight bit that's just outside of the city limits. But the, a whole lot of people who live inside the city limits, which is also restrained by the legislature, our ability to expand those city limits, get City of Bastrop water. And if we do the, this wholesale, they're still going to get a water bill from the City of Bastrop. But we'll have all those, all those cons is that, that we wouldn't have the ability to control the water quality. There, there's a lot of things that it would be like, we're just wholesaling, which then may draw into the, why are you even? I mean, it just gets really complicated really fast. And if they're a wholesale provider, there's still distribution and meters and all of it work and who owns this part of the line and all of that kind of stuff going on.
You, absolutely.
Oh, I just wanted to make a clarification that the sale of those water wells was prior to me becoming on the council. I know some people think I've been here forever and everything, but that happened even longer ago. So just for clarity.
But one of those, one of those council decisions that's been revisited over years, and thank you for bringing that up. Wasn't trying to imply that you were on the council, was trying, I'm really trying to do is make everyone understand just how important these decisions are. They are 50 years, they are life-changing and you don't get a chance to go back and do it again. So it's really important that if you've got questions and you, and it's a whole lot of information that you're getting tonight, which is part of why we wanted to give it to you on April 5th, because this is stuff you won't be voting on until an August, September timeframe. So you have an opportunity to review it and ask questions and really thoroughly understand it. It is, it is a really, really big decision. And it's a decision that for a lot of homeowners, they're going to hear, my water rates are going up? No. And, and it's, and it's hard to have the rest of that conversation. So it's really important as council members that were advocates and able to, whatever the decision ends up being, be, be able to justify why you've made the decision that you have, how it's in the best interest of the community. So I just really wanted to emphasize that the impacts will go well beyond 50 years of what we're deciding now. John?
Yeah, it seems like there is maybe a third option that is similar to the one the council did decades ago, which is could we sell everything to Aqua and have them manage it? And what, what would that cost? And by the way, I'm not saying this because I'm in favor of it. It just occurred to me, I'm like, hey, the council did that before. Does that have a cost associated with it? Is it, I could think of lots of cons, not on the cost side, but on just, you know, the flexibility side. But is that feasible? Is that even?
Sure. So, so to give you some history, really from how it's been explained to me, was that's exactly what they did. They sold the system to Aqua. Aqua expanded its CCN and then increased the rates exponentially and we had no control over that. So we went back to our Louisville well field, which at the time was more than adequate to handle the size of the city. So we've continued to grow and then options, the, the alternate option to build and move to the Simmsboro well field was decided in 2018. I would say the downside to that is you don't control your water, you don't control your supply, you can't manage the rates. And I, and I, it would, it would be a pretty complicated deal to put together, but I do think it can happen.
And the giant, the giant question is, does Aqua have the capacity to do that?
And we don't know that, right?
Yeah. And, you know, I was kind of looking at this second option and we've got $120 million of additional costs over 30 years, with still having to pay 21 million of costs to even do it. And I'm just wondering, well, is this third option just horrifically expensive too? Or all of a sudden we make $20 million if we did it that way? I just.
Well, but the system needs are still there. So if you're Aqua, you're saying, I want to sell you this system that needs $21 million of investment.
Right, 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 right.
Right. And the question is, would they buy the entire system and be retail, right? And that's, that's millions and millions of dollars in value. I don't know what we are on the books, but I'm not sure they're in the, the city of Bastrop buying water business. We can ask.
Fair enough. No, no, I was just, it was just sort of.
And honestly, one of the things that I've thought about and because it's easier to draw on paper than it is to actually figure out the details, that's kind of the beauty of being on council, is maybe they want to invest in the water treatment plant. And maybe we need to get to 10 million gallons sooner. And maybe they want, you know, is there a way to leverage that from a regional standpoint and joint own the treatment plant in phase two, depending on where the growth occurs? You know, there's, and I think we're open to all kinds of partnerships and options. But to specifically answer your question, I think you get what I'm saying, like the, they're struggling because there's so much growth out in the county and they don't currently provide fire flow. And so there's some expectations of municipal residents to have that fire flow, to have the reliability to control the costs. It's, it's kind of, my car needs everything, I think I'll sell it, you know? That's kind of where we are.
Yeah. I don't think that, I think water is a resource that we don't really want to be dependent on somebody else on.
I agree. That's one of the key cons that I was thinking of, but I was just wondering if, you know, everything has a price and maybe there's a price at which, oh, wait a second, this is a better choice, but.
The partnering option is probably the best option rather than trying to just turn it all, all over. But I, I think that the way we're going and the quicker we can get there, probably the better, knowing what the rates and everything's doing right now. It didn't seem to be wanting to stop. So and if we're 90% on the design, that's, that's great. We can get some competitive bids, maybe bring some of the costs down. And that Willow street back feed, or whatever you want, that's what I, that's how I visualize it. If there's a problem, we can go through the Willow and come that way is a great, great idea. I don't know what the cost was, if you have a cost impact for that specifically, but that's a great idea. At least be able to be, have a plan B for something if something happens.
I think it's 1.1 million.
But Mr. Kirkland, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the question because that's part of, that's really the whole purpose of the workshop. Have we looked under every rock? Have we thought about every idea? And that makes it easier than when you come to a decision, it's like, well, did you guys even think about it? And you'll immediately be like, I've been doing nothing else since April 5th, you know? So thank you very much for asking. Kevin, Cheryl, Drew, Doc, any, any other questions?
Someone aim on chocolate.
Quit stealing Mr. Kirkland's chocolate.
It was me, but.
All right. We're exactly an hour in. Do we want to take a quick five-minute break before we go to transportation planning? Are you guys ready to rock and roll? All right, let's rock and roll.
Thanks, Mayor. This presentation from the staff will be shorter than the, the last one. Now we're talking about transportation and where we are with that. And before I ask Trey to dive into the, the couple of slides we have here, let me, let me start with the end in mind and tell you what the essential question is that we're asking council, not necessarily fully answered tonight, but I think the, the question facing us here is just how aggressive do we want to be in implementing our transportation planning future? Transportation, not so much from a street reconstruction and maintenance standpoint, but from the standpoint of roadway volume, capacity improvements and intersection capacity improvements so that we can more, more effectively move the increased traffic through and around Bastrop. Our, our current approach to volume improvements in our roadway system is, is essentially to depend on development to build that new capacity or to apply for grants like the, the Agnes Street project. And I think the option that's ahead of us and an option that we're suggesting that we consider strongly is doing something in addition to that. Development needs to continue to do its fair share. And we might talk a little bit about what, what all that means in providing for those capacity improvements. But our opinion is, from the staff standpoint, is that just doing that does not allow us to keep up with the demand. And I think a simple eye test of just driving around kind of, kind of illustrates that. So the big general question is, do we want to do something in the interim and towards however it is funded to identify what those future transportation needs are and, and provide the upfront funding for that to happen, even if that, some of that upfront funded, funding is, is reimbursed to the city as, as development happens. And the secondary question I have, although it's not as big as the first question, but it, but it relates. Council members who were here last year at this time will remember that we're, we're targeting fiscal '23, next fiscal year, to do an update on our transportation master plan. When I, when I'm asking, I guess, concurrence from the city council is while we, we won't fund that until fiscal '23, is if it, if, if it's okay with council for us to start the process of selecting a consultant now so that we can hit the ground running this fall in the new fiscal year and, and select that consultant so that next year at around this timeframe, April, May, June, when we're really talking about putting the finishing touches on that May of, of 20, I'm sorry, November of 2023 bond election, that's part of the plan right now, that we can more precisely identify the roadway capacity improvements that we'd be looking to fund, should council decide to use debt financing through a general obligation issuance for that. That's, that's not your only option, but it, it is an option. So how aggressive do we want to be in implementing this plan? And be to the extent there's concurrence that we're going to want to update our transportation plan next fiscal year? Can we get started in a no-cost way this fiscal year to select that consultant?
So as we said at the beginning, there, we won't be doing any voting. So selecting the consultant and moving forward with that, something that can, that would be a future agenda.
Not at all ready today.
But before they're going to get all that ready, if somebody's like, no, no, I want to wait, that, it would be good to give them that feedback now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is anybody opposed to moving things along and working to try to have things together to select a consultant in a timely manner for the transportation update plan? Anybody opposed to that?
I don't know what they would do yet, so I can't express an opinion.
Well, that's a, that's a fair point.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I figured that was coming, but, I mean, I'm not opposed to it at all, but I don't even know what it is to, no, to be opposed to it, so. No, I definitely think we need to.
Get going on picking somebody? Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, and we'll talk about what the transportation master plan is. Then because I'm a tacky person, when we were discussing this earlier, I said, I want to talk about intersections because I don't need a consultant to tell me that we need to look at Lover's Lane intersection and we need to look at Berlison Crossing and 71. So I'd like to, and other people may have their other favorite intersections. Those are the ones that make my phone ring the most. And so I would like staff to look at the idea of pulling those intersections out separately and start the, what would the, what would the solution look like? Are there grants for that? Because both of those intersections involve working with Tech Dot and that generally means it's going to take a little longer rather than a little shorter. And, and I know we've got some stuff, I, I know there's been some conversations, but I'd like personally for a 2023, when I'm looking at the budget, I would really like to see an identified project of that intersection and ideas of funding and what are we looking at and is it land, all, all of that kind of stuff. So that for, as far as an RFP and a consultant of what would they be doing? My deal was like, I don't need to pay them to tell me those intersections need some work. So I'd like that to be pulled out separately. Is anybody opposed to that? Anybody want to add an intersection?
I think all three of those. The one at Loop 150, we're, you know, coming out of Piccon Park, we're getting a lot more traffic coming through that intersection. And the one, is it Hassler at McDonald's?
And Hassler too, yeah.
Hassler, people don't know and the road doesn't match, I mean, the whole intersection. So I think all three of those in town with, with Tech Dot might as well tackle all three.
Great idea. So maybe it's like an intersections project and we'll let staff put some time in. It may, it may be with Tech Dot that there's a priority order of what makes sense to be able to get something done. But I would, I, just for me personally, if we can do something to help with those intersections, I think it would go a long way. And that could, low-hanging fruit in an identification standpoint may not be low-hanging fruit from a cost or time standpoint.
I don't know if it's, if there's anything we can do, but an intersection that I've noticed recently, because when I go to work now, right at, right by McDonald's, that, that intersection, is that?
That's the Hassler intersection.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then what about by Casa Chapala? Oh my God, that, that light there is, would be, I would think, one that we would need to consider as well because it, it can literally back all the way up to Chestnut trying to get a cross to go back towards Smithville.
Yeah, that's more of a corridor issue than a intersection issue.
They're not going to allow a light between 21 and 95.
And, and looking at the Chestnut intersection at 95 would not.
That's a part of our corridor.
Okay. But to Ms. Lee's point, that, that intersection has been a point of conversation we've had with Tech Dot because that, when we look at accident data and we do from time to time, that, that area is where we have our, a lot proportionate to other parts of the city where we tend to have a lot of accidents. And we've shared that and we've shared some potential solutions and I know they're thinking all that through.
But to her point, let's add it on the, you know, list of favorite intersections and see what we can do.
One, one of those is 71 and the one you were just talking about, Doc.
Hassler.
Hassler and also by Lowe's is going to be dependent or partially dependent on new development, right? Because as new development goes in there.
Well, except that they're the disaster now.
No, I know, I know. I, I mean, I, I'm there every day, two or three times a day, unfortunately. So yeah, they obviously need to be looked at right away. But I, I think part of the solution is, as the developer goes in there and puts something else in, like right next to Lowe's, that that part of it's going to have maybe some turn lanes going in, some more turn lanes to get out of the, that shopping center. So that, that may help with it, just by the development that's going to happen there may help.
Well, and that's a, that's a good way to tie us back around because ultimately I'm going to ask, I'm going to make the statement in more of a policy, political standpoint than, than the way Mr. Hoffman phrased it. We're either going to control growth or growth is going to control us. And if we wait on the developer, that's letting growth control us. If we proactively put some things into place, then we get to control. then we get to control which... We decide where to put our money. We decide which intersection to go after first. So, that's something to think about. And if we've put the money in upfront, there are funding methodologies that TML loves to teach us about, whether it's a TERS or... There is a way to collect that money back. So, it would be council making a policy decision to aggressively or, in some people's opinions, mandatorily and much needed, put some money in knowing, to Councilmember Crouch's point, that a portion of that's going to be refunded when a developer comes and doesn't have to make those improvements because those improvements are already in place. But they certainly benefit from those improvements. And so, whether you either pay your fair share at the time that it's needed or you pay your fair share because the municipality has already made the investment. Does that make sense? Because I think that's essentially what you're asking us is... And, you know, you don't want to get too far out in front, but we know that once you get behind, you can spend the rest of your life trying to get back out in front of it. So, that's kind of where we are.
Now, would it be beneficial... Whatever that works.
Better?
Yeah, would it be better? Instead of us making the developer build the road to our standards, the road would already be built to our standards.
There you go.
So, it wouldn't be a fight to make sure they did it right. I would think to a developer, now, I'm not... Jimmy can tell. It would be easier because it's already built there. I'm just paying for it instead of getting the materials and building it and getting it permitted, inspected. I just think that would be better, at least, policy.
Yeah, that's what I... Maybe I misstated, but what I meant was that the developer would have to put those things in to develop that property. That would be part of their package to put turn lanes in to get to their property. And that would help relieve some of the congestion in those areas. So, that's what I meant by, as the development continues over there, that they're going to have to put that in. The city wouldn't have to put that in necessarily.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, we know it's needed now. So, if we put those turn lanes in now, the developer can pay their fair share of those turn lanes when they already exist. And then, all of the citizens get the benefit of the intersection being improved prior to the development taking place. And Trey's like, "And we're done," right? Is that... That's... Okay. And so, to the point of any other investment, it's, you don't build every road, right? But, you know, we always had Agnes to the south. We've got Blakie to the north because I can't help but turn this way and see our police chief. And we know that police and fire, when, if there's a wreck on 71, holy cow. And so, from being able to move from a life safety standpoint, being able to have access that's not dependent on 71 is a huge benefit to public safety. And then, there's just the annoyance benefit of being able to get around and have the mobility to get around the community. And if we can improve those intersections and have alternate routes, I think that's something that's tangible, that everybody in the community benefits from. Our residents and the folks that come and leave their sales tax here and leave. They benefit from being able to get in and out as well.
Lord knows we have disasters here.
And we are known to have a disaster now and then, yeah.
Yeah, and then getting anything parallel with 71 is going to help with the congestion so you don't have to get back on 71 to get out. So, Agnes Street and whatever that street is behind Lowe's, I'm not sure of the name of it. But if that was to go through similar to Agnes on the other side, would be awesome. So, whatever we can do to help that.
All right, I'm trying to make this as easy for y'all as I can, Trey. Colin, we're about to lose the TV. It's been too long. Thank you.
Are you still watching? Are you still watching?
All right, Trey, it's all yours.
All right. Motion to adjourn. So, we... So, basically, the current policy direction is, and some of these building Baskett objectives were to have development pay for itself, right? And that's what we've always said. That's what's important. You want to make sure it's connected, hence the gridded network. You want to make sure it's human scale. It's also pedestrian-focused. We have a 720 by 720 grid requirement in the ETJ and then a 330 within the city limits. As part of our master transportation plan update in 2016, we actually looked at that and said, "Hey, we need some more pedestrian connectivity." And you can see how we did, very low, a lot of orange dots. So, we've got lots of work to do. Again, we adopted this street grid, which we think went a long way to that connectivity. And we adopted some cross-sections that are pedestrian-focused and allow us to have multimodal types of, you know, many modes of transportation. So, ride your bike, ride your scooter, take a walk, take the electric taxi, whatever you like. But what we're talking about today is, and I think we've pretty much had this conversation, but we're going to update the master transportation plan in 2023 because it's time. And what we want to know is, you know, it's important who builds the streets. And we're going to talk a little bit about rough proportionality. And that is why Adam is here. He's going to just kind of explain what that means and so on and so forth.
Yeah, that's my cue. I mean, y'all basically have already talked about what it means out in the real world. But we can talk about some of the different parameters that are placed on what we can do, what we can't do, and different courses of actions. And then, kind of some of the different buckets of where we can draw those funds, where we can try to hide and sock money away to use them for different types of projects later on down the road. So, we are going to look at a holistic methodology for paying for these projects in a lot of different ways, kind of piecemeal, rather than just one developer pays for it. But in each of those different aspects, the general rule is that whatever we require someone to pay, there has to be some sort of connection or nexus between what we require them to pay, the public purpose that we're requiring them to pay it for. And then, we can only require them to pay whatever they are using, right? So, it's some public purpose, what we're requiring of them helps achieve that public purpose. And then, they're not paying for all of Baskett's development. They're only paying for their proportionate share. So, those are the kind of the frameworks of when we talk about impact fees, when we talk about exactions of requiring someone to dedicate right-of-way. Those are kind of the... That's a guiding principle. And those are the three components of what rough proportionality means. And so, in every development, when you have to or when you want to require a developer to kind of build something that they don't necessarily want to necessarily, this is kind of how we get there. And something that's important to keep in mind is, just because there's a rule on the books, doesn't mean that people follow it in real life, right? So, a lot of times, we will have agreements that go further than what is required of the developer under state law. They accept that because they're getting something on the other end. There's also a lot of times where the developer is trying to get out of things that by statute he is or she is forced to pay. That happens every single day of my job. And so, there's, what it says on paper does not always match the reality in the real world. So, what's the fix? I think the fix is, rather than relying solely on the developer pays for their own development, after a long history of people trying and succeeding to get out of that, moving towards a more comprehensive approach. And we can kind of go into different ideas of that, whether it be a TERS that was mentioned previously, whether it be impact fees for which we do not currently collect on roads, only on water, sewers. So, that's a possibility. All of those are kind of tools at our disposal. There are different rules that apply. And then, there are different deals that are made even though those different rules apply. So, I can go a little bit further in.
Sure. Well, I think you hit it on the head. There has to be an engineering formula, right? And we want to look at the entire network. Because as we know, as we've continued to grow, for example, the intersection at 304, which I think is another intersection, I'm going to write down anyway, right in Burleson Lane. Once we built the shopping center, it induced traffic. The roads were there. Now, there's a traffic issue. And what we require, and we talked about just last Thursday night, was, "Hey, this street-gridded network's important. We need a minimum 720." And they said, "We're not interested in that." And what's our proportional share? And like Adam talked about, the way we have things, the way we currently do things are a little hard to defend legally. So, a better option is to move to a holistic approach of the entire network. And then, it's based off of trips. It's based off of, let me look at my notes here, right? The length and the number of trips. And then, the overall cost per unit of that road. So, for example, our cross-section, just the standard neighborhood, is about $2 million a mile, all right? So, what they would do is they would take all of that, put it into a matrix, spit out a number of your impact on the entire network, right? And then, come back with your number. And we provide that to the developer. This is your share. Oh, did I mention we're already ahead of this and we're building the roads? Because we're worried about mobility and connectivity already. And there's different ways to fund that. And what Paul talked about a little bit earlier was how important, when do you want to get started? I suggest that we look at the roads that are important to us. We look at the roads that have economic development value because that's going to have a good return on investment. We talk about the timing where if you want to all give a head nod tonight, by the time we actually get to operating and in the next year's budget in October, we've already got a consultant on board. They tell me it takes six months for them to probably develop something for the system that's an overall impact. If we want to establish impact fees, that's an option. They also will tell us, probably within 12 months, and the master transportation plan will be complete. So, we would have that tool at our disposal, understand what was important, say, "Hey, this is your impact, and maybe we want to go ahead and start building it now." There's lots of options for funding. 4B dollars are available. A TERS is available. Impact fees can cover that.
You mentioned something about, you just mentioned 4B. And one thing I want to make sure that everyone's aware of, I've been in two different meetings now where there... And Adam may have some insight into this as well. We already know that the 313s, the 312s, the 380 agreements, those funding agreements where you give back half the sales tax, whether it's 4B funds that you're giving back or school property taxes or city property taxes, there is bipartisan support in the legislature to eliminate municipalities' abilities to do those. They are being viewed as, you're collecting tax dollars from John Q. Citizen and you're giving them to a big corporation that's going to make a whole lot of money. And so, that, those 380 agreements have been a huge tool, legitimately used tool that our EDC has used in the past. And if that is, once it's in the microscope, it's generally, you know, they'll do the... They'll start with less than, you're not impacted if you're less than $200,000. And then, they come back the next legislature and say, "Okay, well, we meant everybody." So, this may be an opportunity because one of the things that we hear about a lot, if you're a developer, time is money and you want something that you can count on. And they're looking for shovel-ready lots, shovel-ready pieces of property, whether it's in the industrial park or anywhere, and defined knowns. So, if the street already exists, if the impact fees have already been calculated and you can run the math, I can, this is ready to go. I'm not wondering what I'm able to negotiate on a piece of paper for me to be able to get started on this project. That may actually have us be a more favorable place to be developed because the infrastructure's in place. They already know they have LUEs, living unit equivalents for water and wastewater. They've got fiber. There's a bike lane. I know Councilmember Crouch wants to make sure there's a bike lane there. And to the point of, we're not having a conversation about whether or not it's reasonable to... And maybe we decide that trees every 30 feet, you know, we're not going to do that. Maybe we're going to do them every 60 feet every other and put the tree wells in place and have the developers come in and do it once. You know, there's a lot of ways to skin the cat. I know, I'll give staff the heads up that I think council's going to be wanting to know things like, "How often are road impact fees used?" It's kind of one of those, you don't ever... There's that perfect age for doctors, and there's a tie here. Hang with me. I don't want my doctor to look like he just got his dri... He or she just got their driver's license. I don't want them to look like they're 12, but I don't want them to be opposed to new medicine. Like, there's that prime spot of, you want them to have some experience and, but be on the cutting edge of technology. And that's, I think that's where we may be with TERS and impact fees. We don't want to be, "Oh, my gosh, what are you doing? I've never been in a town this size that has a road impact fee." But if there's other, if they're like, "You know what? Lots of people are doing this. Here's the numbers." And so, how they're used, ones that have been used successfully, towns our size, towns twice our size. I think that's the kind of information that council would be looking for if we explore other ways to fund things. Mr. Kirkland?
I had actually written some of that down in my notes, which is, "How many other communities fund this way?" And then, you know, trying to discover unintended consequences, you know. I guess in general, not just on this topic, but in any topic, do we ever consult with other councils or other mayors or ask questions like that?
That's what TML is all about.
Ah, yes, yes, got it. Because, you know, a community that's done this would then be approaching, or a developer would be approaching them. And you tell a developer, "Okay," but then you also need to pay $2 million for this road cost. And does that cause the developer to say, "Heck, no," and move on? Or do they say, "Oh, I can manage that. Thanks"?
Right.
What's been their experiences?
So, great question. TML is one of the resources that we have. And quite frankly, Allen's firm is another great resource. And that's why we don't have in-house attorney. We have an attorney that's representing a number of municipalities of different sizes. And they have their own network and they can come back and say... And that's the beauty of... And I do call other mayors. And I'm like, "So, you did this?" And they're like, "Never do this part again." Or, "This has worked really, really great." So, great, great question.
Okay. If I could just clarify something, just for the record's sake, there is a basis for every single exaction that we make. So, it's not hard to defend. However, with some of the tools not at our disposal, some tools are overextended in certain circumstances rather than having the correct tool able to be used and implemented in that particular circumstance. So, for the record, if anybody else is watching, any exaction, there is a basis made for that requirement. However, I think that with additional tools, transparency, you can provide that certainty that you're discussing that is beneficial for a developer in looking at different communities, so.
Allen would be very proud of you, Mr. Hill. This is the part where TML says, "Here's what we think, and be sure and contact your attorney." Because every instance is a little bit different depending on the community now. So, is anybody opposed to different funding sources for roads? Is anything sounding like, "Oh, I don't think I want to do that"? Kevin?
Well, I think, I mean, we're heading in a really good direction. One of the biggest issues, I've been on the EDC board for six or seven years, I guess. And uncertainty is the biggest obstacle we have. It's what could be. It's what costs could be. It's what benefits could be. And to the extent that we can say, "Nope, here's the road. It's already here." Or, "At least, it's already in the plans and, you know, this would be your portion of it." And, you know, they know exactly what it's going to be. And there's no, say, uncertainty and time kills these deals. And to the extent that we can get ahead of it on time and get certainty on cost, I think would be a huge benefit.
Ms. Lee, are you...
I'm just wondering how would it be determined what their portion would be?
That is a great question. So, there's no precise mathematical formulation for its X amount of trips via, or, you know, this type of road for this use. There's no particular defined measurement. We just have to have a professional engineer come up with some sort of calculation, put his professional engineer seal on it, and then the city can kind of hide behind that. That's what the statute requires, is no precise formula, but just under the seal of a professional engineer.
And would that change based on the project or development?
So, I have looked at a couple of different methodologies. And yes, to answer your question, from the ones that I've seen, it does.
And that's one of the advantages of having some of the investments that council's made over the past years of getting the entire transportation system on there. You're able to say, not just, "There's another driveway in this road," but you can do trip generation and how it may impact an intersection, two or three intersections away, sort of thing. So, to your point, if you're putting in a low trip generating, then you may have a smaller, there may be some fundamental proportionality. And then, if you're driving... And then if you're driving intersection improvements or you're taking advantage of intersection improvements that have already been put in place, then you, the additional trips may have additional cost. But it's, and now I'm going to do the engineer and, because it's a civil engineer that would be sealing those plans. And the city would not be hiding behind that engineer. They would be standing behind the city and that engineer.
I'm not a math guy, so I'm hiding.
But we would develop, operationally, we would develop a method. That would be used everywhere. So, there would be one.
So, there'd be consistency.
It'd be based off the use or your trip generation or the length of the trip. So, that's what would change. But we would develop a method that we used consistently.
That would be approved by council as a policy of this is our methodology.
Yes.
Well, and then there's, there's the question of who hires the engineer. And, and just in some of the current conversations we're having, there's a certain advantage to the, to the city doing that. And we can ensure the consistency there is, as well.
There, yes, it can be a third-party engineer or it could be a city employee that has been retained as an engineer as well.
I guess, and I, because part of the developer, having the developers build the streets and the roads was so that that, that cost and impact us so much, right? Was kind of the theory behind developers building roads. So, I guess that's, I get where we're going with that. But then I wonder where, is that going to benefit us more? Are we going to lose more money by building them ourselves? Or will the fee or the cost to them, because we've already built it, will it be equivalent to us doing what we're doing now?
So, we're not changing that, right? We're, we're changing the, the sequence of how things happen. But the idea is not at all to not have the development pay its way to the, to the extent the law and the engineering science would, would allow.
But, but I do think what we were also proposing as part of the update, they would prioritize and we'd have a CIP. And there would be a backbone structure that I think the city could agree upon. And we would go ahead and build that now. And then interior to your development would be 100% your responsibility.
The backbone structure and, and maybe I'm being a little repetitive, but to focus on intersections, and the mayor mentioned this too, and just from what little experience I have with this, making those intersection improvements is a big bang-for-the-buck kind of approach to making sure cars move more efficiently.
So, to just, okay.
Well, and that, and that backbone that you're talking about, we'll have control over that. We would, from a policy standpoint, with the updated transportation plan, which we can look at even the current transportation plan. We've already kind of had the conversation of, you know, Agnes stopping at the hospital doesn't, isn't really doing anybody any good. And that's 4B funds and grant funds that were spent quite a while ago. But if that road goes all the way through and connects, then it's benefiting the local community now. It's benefiting life safety. It's benefiting first responders. It is unfair and I, I won't play lawyer, probably illegal. You cannot make the developer pay for all of the past sins. You can make the developer pay for their fair share of any future sins. So, if we have the intersection improvements ahead of time and if we have that backbone ahead of time, then we're trying to eliminate the whole sin conversation altogether. And then, to the extent of their fair share to that backbone, it would be contingent on, on what they were doing, what their layout was. And if they build to the 3, the 360 or the 720, they'll still have internal roads that they have to do, but they're able to get onto the skeleton. So, they, they can control, they have an ability to influence how traffic is handled within their development, you know, per our existing rules. But, but regardless, if you're only using the, the skeleton, structure, backbone, you have the ability to get through town, whether or not that is a vacant piece of property or a developed piece of property.
And what's put in that CIP, just like water and wastewater, would ultimately be what's put in that impact fee. So, for example, the wastewater plant was already a million gallons a day the day we decided to build a 2 million gallon a day plant. The current customers are responsible for that 50% because it's already their wastewater. And again, the growth is all we can charge for.
Just a couple of things to clean up. Yes, it would provide additional certainty. There is a methodology that is created. However, just for the record, I keep looking up because I feel like I'm getting recorded over here. It is applied on an individualized basis. So, there's, there's not a one-size-fits-all, but it does get you beyond that first step of, well, we're going to go talk with staff and then what? Right? And then to answer your question of, you know, is it going to be cheaper in the long run to do it this way versus that way? I don't know that it is a zero-sum game, this versus that. I think more of a comprehensive approach. But it is fair to say that impact fees shift the burden from existing taxpayers to new development. So, that, at least in the context of impact fees, would be aligned with the make development, new development pay for itself.
That's probably the intention. That's, that's where the word impact comes. You're making an impact to the system. You're paying for the impact that you're making.
And we, I don't know if we've defined, we've mentioned of a TIRZ a couple of times. I'm not sure we've, if we've really defined it. But it, it, but it, but it, but it has the same sort of impact of distributing the cost away from the, the, the general Bastrop taxpayer. So, TIRZ, T-I-R-Z, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. When you, you, you identify a particular geographic area, you establish the property tax revenues at a particular point in time. You, you freeze that amount. You treat it as a base. So, if, if you're talking about developing, say, 200 acres and the tax revenues on that 200 acres is, is $1 million today, well, that, that tax, that $1 million continues to be collected and used the way it was before the TIRZ was created. After the TIRZ is established, and this is where the I comes in, the increment, any property tax revenue increase as a result of the new value brought on by the new development is, is only used to pay for public improvements associated with that development in, within that geographic area. At least, I think it's within that geographic area. So, it, 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 it means that the public improvements or I guess a mini CIP for that area is established by the, by the governing body. The city council has to approve it. The, the, the rest of the taxpaying public still enjoys the, the base from what was there before. But the development and only the, the development enjoys the, the tax revenues from, from the increment, from the, from the new development. And, and so, any public improvement associated with that, that could be, that could be general government stuff like roads and drainage. It could also be water and wastewater improvements is, is paid for by that. That's, that's how that works.
Yeah, yeah. So, just to kind of encapsulate what we're talking about here. The city uses basically a rough proportionality assessment right now to make development pay for itself. What we're talking about is the additional tools of three different things. Impact fees, potentially a TIRZ. And then we've talked a little bit about 4B sales tax funding as well. And so, we're, you know, in each of these three additional tools, there will be notice requirements. We're going to have to hold hearings. There's going to be a administrative lag between now and whenever it's actually implemented. There's a lot of different time for us to review and, and exactly kind of curtail and alter whatever process we want to go through to make sure it fits either the geographic project boundaries for a TIRZ or for impact fees for the city as a whole. You know, those are the three things that I think we're here to talk about as it helps add things to the city.
And we're always looking for examples. I will share with you that Elgin did a TIRZ with Lee Dildy. So, they built Lee Dildy Boulevard. That was done with a TIRZ. And that's what they're using to drive the development. And they've gotten, I think there's a small clinic, a hotel, I don't, I don't, but Elgin is an example of somebody that they're big believers in their TIRZ. And it was a way of, I think of it, Adam will, will probably correct me. I kind of think of it as a miniature geographic 380. It, it's, it's another way of, of the developers' efforts going back to make sure that it's, helps the developers' area. And so, it's, it's, in, in a weird way, it's like a geographic, different version of a 380.
Yeah. If 380 is a concept in the north side of the neighborhood, I think it's a perfect, it's a good analogy. You know, for, for those, I would say that's kind of a more scalpel than cheese sauce. Where it's for a more particular project. The impact fees are a little broader. You can fill back to, I'm probably using the same. So, in this respect, on the broadest case, impact fees. Then to the middle, 4B uses the end margin.
We started this section by talking about a consultant. And so, then we went, we've gone through the, the slides. So, back to the question that kind of was asked, what would that consultant do? And then we kind of talked about which intersections we thought should be addressed.
So, we would, if we're interested in moving in this direction, which I, I feel like we are, we would look for a consultant now. They would develop those, an understanding of the impact of the whole system and have us something ready to move forward with in the next fiscal year. So, in October, unless you want to move faster than that.
Okay. Have you seen the Transportation Master Plan?
No.
Okay. That's where you need to start.
So, the Transportation Master Plan is, again, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty large document. It was done in conjunction with our comprehensive plan. And it's a laid-out network and backbone, if you will, of all of the collectors, the local streets, the highway and, and the other road components in the city of Azroth, right? How we move traffic A to B. And it is, again, it's, it's a pretty sizable document. Inside that, it has prioritized things that are important. It makes recommendations on multimobility. It talks about cross-sections. And it also, it talks a little bit about, again, the network itself and how we want to continue to move forward.
So, would the consultant's role be updating this document? Is that?
So, so the consultants would update this document. That's part of 2023. But I think we're also asking tonight, is it, are you interested in moving to a system, right, that's, that's comprehensive for the entire network? Not just based off of one developer at a time?
Because this one's kind of a road-at-a-time process and methodology, so.
And if we were, just to follow up on something Adam was saying earlier, that if we were to implement impact fees, we would need, we would need to make sure that that transportation plan update provided the, the sufficient detail on what those impacts would be in a, in a geographic-sensitive kind of way. Similar to what we're doing right now with the, with the comprehensive drainage study that we're a few months into. There's a, there's a sub-consultant associated with that project who is going to give us sufficient data should council at some point in the future decide you wanted to implement a drainage impact fee. That's another tool. I mean, we, we're not talking about drainage tonight. But just to, to, to make the example, that's, that's another financing tool cities can implement. That's ultimately a policy call. But what, what we would do, unless we hear a different direction from council as we're developing the scope of work for the Transportation Master Plan, we would make sure that it provided that sufficient data from which we could implement street impact fees.
So, one of the things that Trey and I always make sure that, that folks understand is when they look at the Transportation Master Plan, it's lines on a piece of paper. Because some people be like, wait a minute, my house. It's, it's lines on a piece of paper. And so, if we were going to go to a TIRZ or an impact fees or anything like that, one of the things that we would update and do is like there, you'll see some roads in there that were a line on a piece of paper. And now they exist. And they may exist under that line or they may exist in a slightly different spot. But we would identify that critical backbone and say, these are the only roads that we're collecting impact fees. These are the roads that we're going to invest in. If you're going to do the north side, you got to do this part of it. Because if you don't build the whole thing, there's really no point to collect the impact fees because you haven't solved the problem, sort of thing. So, that's, that's the type of stuff that the consultant would do, that they're talking about, getting things in line to be able to identify a consultant.
Has, was there any, for the, the master, master transportation plan and the planning of starting that up? I know it was a pretty big deal to finally get this going. Public input in terms of what areas of our community would like to see focused on?
We would definitely build that into the scope of work.
But hang on. The document that he's looking at, there's public input. There's planning and zoning input. There, that's, that's all a part of it. So, we got their input when it was done. So, in the update, it's absolutely a part of it. And it could be how the policymakers could have a guidance of, you know, really, we can't, because we all know without having the answer, it'll be a bigger piece of pie than what we can actually take care of. And so, we can use some of that input to prioritize things. But that's definitely, I think you have to have public input or you're not able to update the plan.
We would. We absolutely would. And, and this, this was actually updated with the county. So, we actually had county input when this was done in 2016, 2015, 2016.
This was 2016?
Right. We would have a public meeting for updating the master transportation plan for the adoption, multiple meetings for the adoption of any impact fees. If we decided to use 4B sales tax revenue for a particular project, that would have to go to the voters. There, there's a lot of subsequent notice and public involvement in each of these different tools outside of just, hey, what's going on on the master transportation plan?
And are we primarily focusing on the 71 corridor? Or would downtown be considered in this? In coming up with ideas to make downtown congestion better?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, Mesquite is a road that's been talked about a lot of having something beside, because right now you have Chestnut and Cedar is really the two main access points to 95. And as, you know, back then, when the plan was adopted, we still had the ability to annex. And there was discussion that the city was going to grow north. Now that we can't annex, it doesn't change the fact that if you take like the Pecan, or not Pecan, Piney Creek, that's definitely increased some traffic in the north side of Bastrop. And there's always been a discussion about making Mesquite one of that backbones. So, yes, you'll see that the, when you look at the plan and, Trey, did you have a overview of it back a few slides? It, it covers the entire city.
So, the network that you see there in the red and blue was actually part of the originally adopted plan in, in the 2015, 2016. In 2019, we updated this with the white grid that you see there. And that's based off of that 720 grid network.
But the impact fees are, and some of the stuff we're talking about is probably more of like the blue lines.
I would think so, yeah. That would be your backbone network we're talking about. I think makes, makes sense, yes.
Did you have a? Did you have a, we skipped a couple of slides that we didn't talk about. And it looks like it, they are one of the intersections we were talking about at 71. Did we miss some information that we needed to get on, on these slides?
No, I, I think that everybody was just, was far enough ahead that we didn't need these slides. We actually did talk a little bit about this intersection at 304. And some of the alternate options, if I can get this to work here. We did talk about this a little. This was something that the developer actually proposed. This right here is that Blakely Land Extension, which you'll see in both of the master transportation plates. We think it makes a lot of sense. But that's the kind of stuff that I would suggest is a city priority. That's the kind of stuff that you establish an impact fee for. That's the kind of stuff you decide how you want to pay for it, whether it's TIRZ, 4B dollars, whatever. And then we come back, because I think this does have a, a value, an economic value as well. And, and once this was built, we would recoup the remainder that the current local traffic doesn't use, if that makes any sense. We already know we have a congestion problem there. This will probably relieve about 30% of it. So, that remainder- This will probably relieve about 30% of it, so that remainder would be based off, I guess, where the impact fee, and I know Adam's probably going to make sure I said that legally, but the bottom line is, we want to make sure it's done with some engineering nexus, and that it's all completely legal and signed off by Adam and Allen. And all we needed was some real policy direction that said, hey, we think this is a good idea. And I think we've gotten that. But if you want to talk about this, I'm happy to.
And I've said in a, in a city meeting that anyone that completes that, I will give a hug to.
Perfect.
So, I mean.
All right, council, we're at almost two hours, pretty good, gets good information. Everybody okay? Any other questions? We're meeting again in two weeks. And what's on our agenda for two weeks, Mr. City Manager?
And, and thank you, council. This was very helpful, and I think it will help us prepare for what we talk about in two weeks. So in two weeks, you'll see an update of a draft capital plan that looks out five years. You'll look at some draft fiscal forecast numbers for each of our major operating funds and our capital fund, our debt fund, our 4B fund. And you'll also, and that, and Tracy will present that, and Jennifer Bills will be at the table, and she'll give an update on where we are with the comprehensive plan. And that'll all help us be prepared for May 12th. Thank you.
Excellent, really, thanks to staff, appreciate it. You'll have this in their, in a Dropbox someplace, or?
And, and again, we, we will have a notebook for you, and there will be a paper copy of this and that. And yeah, we can, we can make it available to you electronically as well.
Sometimes that's helpful if you're in a meeting and you're trying to think of that. I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Since Bill's not here, I'll move to adjourn.
I have a motion from Mr. Flunkett, and a second from Councilmember Crouch. It is 5:52, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
We're not watching my call.